With the police department both being on eight hundred, there's a common channel that we can both go to. To talk when it comes to special events or standbys or things like that, we would have that capability. A lot easier than what we currently do now.
Jamie Kane, I have a question for you. I don't recall this, uh, this being a topic of discussion as long as I've been on the board. Just how long have they been talking about it, Greg, in these radios?
Well, I think we've been talking about it probably for the last, at least three years, I want to say. And we've probably been talking about more on the police department side, but we do, it's coming. And then I know the police department's been able to get some grants, I think, to get some of the radios. I, is that, I, I thought that's right, isn't it? Brendan?
Yeah, so what happened was is, um, this discussion on eight hundred actually has been going all the way back to probably two thousand four, two thousand five. Yeah, because that's pretty much this all, um, when, when nine eleven happened. Um, better communications for all emergency services and that, so you're looking a long time ago. But what happened was is when we, before we consolidated nine one one, we used to buy all radios from nine one one and that, so that's how we got everything replaced. So about five years ago, we did a replacement for all law enforcement. And then that's when the volunteer fire departments and Greensburg Fire, um, received our hand me downs and that. So that's kind of where we're at now, is it's just we were able to get that, used to be through nine one one services, but again, that's when we went to the public safety. We knew that radios, laptops, stuff like that would have to be purchased out of public safety instead of nine one one. So hopefully that answered that.
Thank you.
I guess I'm of the opinion that if the money's in public safety, rather than leasing them or paying interest over three years or five years, let's just pay for it. I mean, I, I think. I, I'd be prepared.
It's a lot of money, but I think it's, 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 it's necessary. We need to, we need to, we need to get this done.
And I will, let me, I will work with Brenda this week to confirm that all the numbers that I've given to you off of all the papers I've come off my desk are accurate to make sure that the money's there, the balances are correct, and then it will all fit. I think it would probably be good for the chief, if you guys do believe that that's the way to go, to go ahead and give us approval for that. But I will work with Brenda and Chief Stermer to make, and Chief Bridges too, to make sure that it all does fit and that we're not going to overdraft something or that I've misinterpreted some of the information. Just as a mission.
As important as this project is, I don't, it is not my attempt or it's not my will to want to deplete an account or bankrupt an account, um, for the sake of this. There's, there's, unfortunately, I mean, we have contingency plans, they're not the greatest, but there are some contingency plans in place as well as, um, future budgeting cycles. It's just, um, we're one cog in a wheel that's moving forward very fast. And, and this was the necessary step to take.
I still go back from a, from a cash flow standpoint, should we not consider this option one, the three year lease? I know we will pay some interest, there's no penalty for early payoff. We don't have a clue what's going to happen in August when we start to do budgets. We don't have a clue what we're going to be hit with.
But, am I looking at this right? There were about four percent interest?
Yeah.
For three years and then?
It's eighteen thousand dollars in interest over three years.
It was a lot of money.
If you, if you do the full three years.
Right.
Kevin's point's valid, um, you know, this is a local option income tax that the county implemented. It is income tax based, unemployment is taxable. So people that are unemployment currently are being taxed on that. But it is driven from an income based funding stream. And my, and Chief Bridges may know, but my interpretation of what's on my desk is it has an annual income of about six hundred and some odd thousand. Is that?
That is correct.
Okay.
Well, yeah, until this happened, it's, it's going to drop significantly for twenty twenty, I think. We'll see, but I, I think it is. So maybe the, maybe the option is, is we look at the three year and then determine if we can, if, if we look at the numbers and determine we can pay it off sooner, then maybe we bring it back to the council and decide if we want to pay it off early instead of going with the three years, right?
But that thing, we can look at it over the month and come back next month. We can go ahead and approve it and then get our financing next month.
I agree. I, I, I don't care where we're going to get the money, I think it has to be done. It's just all there is to it.
That's what I was getting at, Rick. I, I was just saying, we could take the motion to approve it on the three year, the three year lease program, basically. And then if we decide to pay it off early based off the numbers and figures, then we can bring it back and look at that.
Is that a motion?
It's a motion.
Second.
Second.
Okay, there we go, made by Councilman Kane, seconded by Councilwoman McKenzie. Brenda, roll call please. Wait, wait a, wait a second, do we want, is everybody okay with that number? I know the chief had mentioned earlier a slightly different number, but that full two twenty...
What, was one a cash price and one was a finance price?
Well, two twenty-two, three fifty-six was if we, if we financed it, if we paid for it all, but then it's, what, eighty thousand, one seventy-five, thirty-five a year over three years, right?
Right, correct.
So, okay.
The first payment's not due till one year after the contract execution, there's no penalty for early payoff.
Okay, so, so the motion is for two, to purchase radios for two hundred twenty-two thousand, three hundred fifty-six point three five. And we want to enter into the option one of three years at a rate of three point nine six. Correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, Chris, does that?
Do we want to put a time on this and when we can revisit it, uh, to pay it off early?
I'd say during budget time, because the first payment's not due for one year after the contracts do.
That's fair.
Come August, we're going to have a, a better idea of what we are going to have.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, Chris, does that work for everything?
Yeah, I, in fact, I was going to say, I think we probably need to clarify a little bit of what the motion is, but I think your, um, recitation of what the motion is is consistent with what I think the record reflects. So that's the motion, as, as Josh has set it out, is what Jamie said.
Yes.
Fire, do you still second that?
I do.
Okay, Brenda, roll call vote on that, please.
Jamie Kane?
Yes.
Daryl Poling?
Yes.
Vieta McKenzie?
Yes.
Kevin Fleetwood?
Yes.
Rick Ensler?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Chief Stermer, if you move forward on that project, we'd appreciate it.
Okay, so I do not need a second reading, is that correct?
Yes.
Well, well, hold on, that wasn't an ordinance, we gave them the approval to move forward. If we're going to take the money and move it from public safety to the fire department to pay the funds, then that would be, I mean, we'd do that in ordinance form.
Okay, I'm just making sure I can call them tomorrow then and start this process.
You can call and start the process while we need to do those complete inordinates to move the money. But we would, if the first payment's not due until next year, then we didn't even have, we could do that, we could try to do something like that in budget time and get it set up through the budget.
Okay.
We, we can appropriate it through the budget.
Yeah, I agree with, uh, Councilman Kane. What you've done is, they've approved you to go forward with contract negotiation, determination, they've given you a path. You don't have a formal ordinance moving any money yet, which you may not need one. If, if ultimately you're able to do it during your budget appropriations, the she here good as far as I can tell. If you always don't have to write a check to anybody, you're good.
All right. Comes out of your account, right?
Okay, up next, um, we have Sarah Hammer, building commissioner, with a request to update the fire pit ordinance. Sarah?
Good evening, everybody. Good to see all of you this evening. I'm going to talk just very, very briefly on this ordinance and then I'm going to turn it over to Jamie, because he is the one that requested some changes and the mayor and myself, um, worked on this and I appreciate the mayor's help. My first time doing an ordinance, so, uh, anyhow. Ordinance twenty twenty dash four is amending ordinance nineteen seventy-six dash three, regarding the burn ordinance. So there were, um, some segments that were left in here from the old, but pretty much a lot of it was rewritten, uh, and redone. Um, of course, we all know that fire pits have become more popular over the years and obviously this ordinance has not been changed anyway since nineteen seventy-six. I won't tell you how old I was then, but anyhow. So with that, um, I'm going to kind of let Jamie, um, discuss it and I, I believe he's gotten some phone calls and questioning, um, about fire pits and bonfires and those different things. So Jamie, take it away.
No, I just, there were some inconsistencies in how we managed fire pits throughout the community. I had several calls on it, uh, once we did some investigating, basically, our current ordinance says that they're not allowed. Um, however, we all know that they're all over in our community, um, people are using them. Uh, the other thing it does is it puts the fire department in a bad spot, because if the neighbor calls and complains by my ordinance, they go and they put it out. Even if they're out there making s'mores with their kids or whatever, they, they have to put the fire out, because that's what the ordinance says right now. So one event, basically what I had was I had a gentleman that wants to use his fire pit, but his neighbor calls every time he, he uses it. Um, and so the fire department puts it out every time he puts it up, so. So this was kind of one of those ways where we could, uh, basically explain the ordinance, put some stuff in here, tell, say what we want to do, and then also put some penalties in place with it as well. To kind of put a little bit of teeth with it, so people aren't abusing it and those kind of things as well. But it'll, it basically allows us to have fire pits. You know, they've got to be at least fifteen feet from the structure. It kind of limits them in their size, uh, to no more than three feet in diameter, to no more than two feet in height. If you want to get something bigger than that, uh, then basically you have to go to the fire chief or the fire department to get a permit, um, to do something bigger than that. And that, that would've been, that was consistent with the old ordinance, if you wanted to do those things as well. So, but this just means, say, if I got a fire pit in the backyard and I want to use that, I, I don't have to go get a fire permit every time I want to light that off.
Do, do, does the fire department actually get people that call in and say, hey, can I get a permit to burn?
Yes.
Does it happen often?
Oh, I, I don't know, chief, is the chief still there? His icon's there, but I know he turned off his camera.
When I was on, Vieta, we didn't, unless it was a big fire.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Fire pits, they, they wouldn't call.
When you first, when you first started asking the question, I thought you were asking, do people call about putting those out? Sorry, I apologize.
No, not that, I just want, I, do people actually call and say, hey, can I get a permit? Because I really need to, got a pile of stuff that I really need to burn and I just don't see people doing that. And Rick, Rick validated that that's not something that happened very often, so.
Well, it's one of those things that we-
Fire or something, they, they would call, but yeah, I used to have backyard burns all the time.
And it's one of those things that almost works in the opposite. When something is happening that we don't want happening, we can say, you didn't get the permit to do that. Or if it's unsafe or too large or something like that, that's part of the value in having something like that as well. It works backwards.
Section five in this permit also allows us to assign a penalty for that, so if somebody is doing that without going to get a permit, well, now there's some teeth to the ordinance, which one in there before? To help protect against those things.
I like, I like the ordinance, I like the wording of the ordinance. I know there are, um, a lot of, um, pits within the city that are used. I know of some people that have them that have spent, spent a very large sum of money on a very nice pit that they use, so I like the idea that it does have some teeth to it and some regulation, so.
Hey, just for clarification for me, um, F, number three, the fire pit itself can be higher than two feet, but the flame cannot exceed more than two feet above the top of the fire pit, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe we could amend that to maybe clarify that, if you want.
I thought you, I, I wasn't reading, but I thought you said earlier on that the, the fire pit couldn't be over two feet high.
Well, the width of the, the width of the pit is three feet in diameter, and then it says the fire pit shall not exceed two feet in height, is what it says, actually.
It says, no, it says fires in a fire pit should not-
Fires, okay, the, yeah, yeah, nevermind. I did, I was reading it really quick, you're right, it does say that.
Fires in a fire pit.
And so, I mean, if you built a something, you could have a three or four foot tall fire pit, as long as the flame doesn't exceed two feet above the top of it, you're good.
That's how I read that, yes.
I think that would be a reasonable interpretation.
All right.
Do you want the wording on that changed, or?
I think, I think it's good.
I think it's clear the way it is, I just wasn't sure that, I wasn't, oh, I was, I was, how everybody else and so forth and so on.
But I did look at Columbus's ordinance, and I like that last part on theirs, which says, any complaint about odor, smoke, or flying embers will be caused for immediate league, or immediate extinguishment upon the discretion of the fire department. So if they get called on smoke, then it's up to the department. So you got asthma if you're living next to your fire pit, they call when you're in danger.
I don't think it hurts to put that in there. Uh, the only thing, does that create a problem for the firefighters, because then they're making a call, right? They gotta make a ju-
They've got to make the call, that's, they, they need to. But you have to have, if somebody's embers are jumping up and down, or like I say, the smoke is bad, they have to have the say if they put it out or not.
Okay. We can add a letter, we can add a letter J, how did that read again? I, I read that ordinance, I just don't remember that one.
Uh, the way I've got it broke down is, any complaint about odor, smoke, or flying embers will be caused for immediate extinguishment of the fire at the discretion of the fire department. So they will still have a say, if they go and it's, they don't determine it's real bad, let it go.
Sarah, were you able to get all that?
I can stop and see her.
Okay.
What, where, where are we at? If it's Colum-, if it's Columbus, I've got theirs.
We're talking about adding a letter J, Vieta, which basically just says any complaints about smoter, smoke, odors, embers, could be caused for immediate, this extinction, uh, based at the discretion of the fire department.
That way, if the fire department gets called, they've got something, they can go out and see, oh, it's not that bad, and let it go.
If you'll, if you'll allow, uh, Sarah and I, I believe we can work that into section E, extinguishment authority. So it's not create-
Okay, that's fine.
Duplication or confusion.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Well, see, the fire chief's back, does he have any more comments on this?
I don't know if you heard what we were just talking about, chief, do you have any heartburn on that?
No, I think that, uh, you know, we were in a, we were at one today that it was, uh, a guy was burning an old rocking chair. Granted, he shouldn't have been burning it, but, uh, the nine one one caller was a disgruntled, uh, neighbor who said he was burning tires and throwing tires on there, so on the way there, you think it might be something bigger than what it's not. He was okay with the ordinance, still with the ordinance, if the ordinance would have been as it, as it is being read, he still wouldn't have been able to have it. I have no heartburn with the way it is, and, and not to, to complicate things at, at all, um, but with the amount of illegal burns we do have, I would, I would, uh, entertain the, the input of council to somehow attach a fee schedule, um, and, and a, some type of ticketing or some type of uh, penalty for some of this burning. We're seeing quite a bit-
We have.
It's in here, it's in section five. So it says, any person, uh, firm or corporation who violates this ordinance may be fined as follows, hundred dollars for first offense, two hundred second, five hundred dollars for a third offense or more.
Okay, and I, is that a police department, do we file that to the, I guess, Chief Bridges and I'll work at that? But we've, especially with COVID, and I get people are stir crazy in their house, but we have seen an uptick in burning, um, which is probably some reason why, you know, it was brought to your attention as well. But, um, the burning of, uh, plastic off a copper wire is, um, somewhat rampant in town, as, as well as burning things that are trash, but, but large trash items, and I commonly get, well, I don't want to wait for heavy trash. Unfortunately, they are creating that nuisance, uh, smoke and that nuisance smell, because those things that they choose to burn, um, have somewhat of a very noxious odor, um, that, that does, you know, irritate the neighbors.
And I think that's covered in the, um, D, the material restrictions.
For sure, absolutely.
And then in F for fire pits, what the, you know, the things that are allowed to burn to get it started, so.
Yeah, do some, we can push some, some good information out with pictures and of fire, what a fire pit is, what, what is allowed, what is not allowed as we progress, um, with this ordinance and as we, uh, as we get into those, uh, outdoor fire evening type temperatures.
Anybody have some other questions on this one? If, no, I'll make a motion that we approve it as amended on letter E, um, with Rick's suggestion. And I know that we'll come back with some new wording, but basically as amended, including the, uh, giving the fire department the ability to extinguish the fire based on smoke odor, smoke odor complaints.
I'll second it.
Uh, Brenda, will you please do a roll call vote?
Jamie Kane?
Yes.
Daryl Poling?
Yes.
Vieta McKenzie?
Yes.
Kevin Fleetwood?
Yes.
Rick Ensler?
Yes.
Okay, um, up next, oh, Sarah, a quick update on the building office.
Yes, so, um, just an update from the office. For the past few weeks, of course, we've been working from home, but also coming into the office periodically to check messages. I have made my cell phone available, um, to people in the community, if they call the office, the message has how they can, uh, get in contact with me and then, of course, by email. So, um, we, on permits, we're still issuing permits and, um, we just set up an appointment time for people to come in, um, take the paperwork, you know, issue the permit for, for said things. We've been doing a lot of decks, um, some pools, accessory buildings. A lot of people are, uh, doing that kind of thing since they've been off work, so. Uh, we've been taking care of the needs of the contractors and the citizens and the community during the shutdown, everything's been going well. Um, this past week, myself and Steve Raymer have driven throughout the city, um, limits, looking for grass violations, junk trash violations, junk vehicles. Thought now would be a really good time to, um, do that drive-through of the city with, uh, heavy trash week coming up, the week of May eighteenth. We got, uh, grass letters out today. Later this week, we will, um, get the junk letters out so that they have like, I believe, ten days that'll coincide with heavy trash week, so that they have that week to get the trash and, um, the junk and stuff out to the road. So we've been focusing on that, this is, um, going into this time of year, so, uh, looking forward to, um, just continuing to, to keep Greensburg looking good, get things cleaned up. That is, um, a big goal, um, and staying on top of it, so everything's going great.
Okay, any questions for Sarah?
Is, is Mark on here by any chance?
I don't see him.
Or somebody's in office.
Wait a minute, he's coming on, I think. Is he there?
I'm here.
Hey, do you, do you perceive this being heavier than normal, with these people being off work for so long and?
You want to make her?
That's what I thought, okay.
She'll be responsible.
I'm just like-
We ran twenty percent over on trash for the month already.
I just, I just want to stress that the safety, making sure that the guys, um, stay safe.
That's a big concern with the virus situation is, we don't have to touch much currently. Heavy trash week, we're going to have our hands on everything you can imagine. And that's a big concern. Because there's no way to mechanically pick it all up. At least not the month. I think the mayor and I are scheduled for the radio Thursday morning. I'm hoping that perhaps we can encourage people that have the capability, if they will bring it to us, to the street department, we have to transfer a little material anyhow, that it would cut down on the amount of things that we have to handle physically. If that makes sense.
Yeah, so like I have stuff on a trailer, it would benefit, it would be a bigger benefit to you if I was to just bring the trailer to-
Just bring it, bring it off in my garage, in the parking lot, and we'll have a collection area, and I'm hoping people would utilize that.
Okay.
Hit us tremendously.
Well, then I don't have to handle it twice either. Okay, thank you.
But I'm concerned about the safety issue for the guys, I really am, with the amount of material we're going to have.
We continue to, um, buy hand sanitizer when it's available in bulk, um, gallon jugs. The hospital donated some to EMA, so I dropped off a couple gallons to the street department today, a couple gallons to the wastewater plant.
I've got a good recipe to make some, if you're out, really good recipe.
You got, you didn't make it then, please. So, so we, I, we, we'll continue to stay in touch about that, yeah. Mark and I are on Thursday to talk about what that looks like in May, and we, like he said, we already have a large volume of trash just generally for this month. But again, that's May eighteenth, normal trash days. Anything else for Sarah or for Mark? Okay, uh, Donna, quick update from how the utilities are doing through all of this.
We actually are doing well, I'm proud to say, and my staff has been doing amazing. We're working both, um, in office, of course, to get payments, both thin and collected, the mail posted and collected. And, um, I have one person working in the office every day to stay on top of things with messages and everything. Overall, um, accounts receivable has increased three percent over last year at this time. Our consumption, of course, is down compared to April of last year by fifteen percent, but everything's doing well.
And, uh, people are paying their bills and staying on top of that.
They are.
No worse than normal.
Yeah, three percent better than they were last year this time. As well, year to date. Yeah, knock on wood, everything's going well.
Good, good.
It is good, yes, I was very concerned, hopefully it stays that way. We did not do shut offs for the last two months as well, so everybody has been doing well.
Okay, any other questions?
You're very welcome.
Donna and her team have done, uh, wonderful, just like everybody else, uh, who's continued to work full steam through all of this in different forms. So we appreciate that. Kristen is going to, uh, talk on what went through the Board of Works tonight as far as website redesign. That's a project I know we've been talking about for months and it's finally, hopefully going to get started here very soon. So I'll turn it over to her on that, and then she's also going to address the new branding that we are working with Daniel Fay. So Kristen?
Can't hear you. Can't hear you. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. So back in March, we sent out a request for a proposal, um, for a rebuild of the website. And we received, um, a few responses, and so earlier this evening before the Board of Works, um, because it's a professional service, I presented my recommendation as to what vendor we should go with, and, um, I recommended Simple View and the Board of Works agreed with me. Um, I have that RFP, IRFP available, if you would like to look through it, just so you can kind of see what the company is and what it stands for. and what it stands for and different clients that they've had. Um, but decided to go with this company because not only how impressive their presentation was, but because they met every aspect of the RFP that we specified. Um, it would allow for city employees, including myself, um, a couple people from the police department, a couple people from the fire department to be able to access the content on a daily basis. So I'd be able to go in there and post meeting notices, um, meeting minutes, calendar updates, things of that sort, um, myself on a daily, uh, a daily basis. And also have a GIS system which would connect with hours that we have, um, ready and available. Um, it's a secure site as well. It, their security, um, layout and technology that they have is very impressive. And they use a different kind of back system, so it's not a content management system, which is traditional. They use a different kind that they built themselves as a company. Very innovative, very tech savvy, um, and very secure. So in case we were ever to be hacked or taken ransom, like the courthouse was not too long ago, um, we wouldn't have an issue. So, uh, the design that they also showed for their current clients and different websites they've worked on is very clean, very modern, very intuitive, which you can see those examples in the RFP if you would like to look at it. Um, it also shows a very, a varying amount of different designs that they do and different add-ons. So it was just all very impressive. Uh, so the board of works approved, um, for us to use up to thirty thousand dollars to get this website built. The timeline is gonna be about twenty-two weeks. And so hopefully within twenty-two weeks, we will have a new city website.
What's the name of the company again?
Simple View. All one word.
Since you had an RFQ, um, I'm assuming that all vendors met all requirements of the RF, of your request for quote?
It wasn't truly, because it's a professional service, we hired the one best suited for our needs. I mean, it wasn't a sealed question.
That wasn't the question I asked. The question was, did all the vendors meet the RFQ?
No. I mean, there were some ser- there were some things that we had to think back to, that Kristen's been the one that's been. There were some that didn't meet necessarily video hosting, or style, or ability to meet what we wanted. And some also just didn't answer the question that was presented to them. So while everybody maybe could have met it, they did not present it the way that Simple View did or showed their depth of work in other projects that have been completed already.
And then, and I know, and we've had this conversation, we've had the conversation, but so their quote was how much again?
Their quote in total was twenty-six thousand, uh, seven hundred dollars, but we added a few thousand at the end, just in case, um, anything were to come up, if we ran into any issues.
Is there, then is that a one-time fee? Is there gonna be an annual fee attached to it?
That is a one-time fee and then there is an annual fee after the first year. That annual fee is, let's pull that up real quick, ten thousand, two hundred dollars and we plan on working that into the budget.
And that's, Jesus Christ.
With that ten thousand dollars though, we're seeing, um, maintenance, hosting the website, security updates, browser updates, API changes and CMS platform upgrades too, so that, um, we don't have to worry about our CMS becoming outdated and, um, underperforming. So that because it updates on a regular basis on its own, then every few years, we would not have to go through this process of rebuilding our website, not only on the backend, but in the design as well.
It's not cheap.
No, there was some-
And it's just gonna keep going up, so.
There was one website that was cheaper, Kevin, maybe, but they, that was significantly cheaper, but they didn't allow us to add content on a regular basis either. So especially during this time, right now, it'd be nice to be able to put content out that changes almost daily from the CDC or from the county, the state, those kinda things.
Well, I, I get that, but man, that's, I, I keep going back to what's gonna happen with our budget this year and, and, and there's a lot of unknowns there. And then to, to think, at this point in time, to drop twenty-five grand and then commit to ten grand a year, would be being better suited to wait to, wait till budget time, just to see what we are gonna have, what kinda funds we are gonna have available to us. I mean, I, you, you, you guys, I gue- I guess I'm playing devil's advocate. I'm very concerned about cash flow and, and what our budgets are gonna be like this year.
So maybe this is a good opportunity for me to skip down then to where, under my section, we talked about financial custody. Gave a quick update to the board of works as well. We, along with Brenda and myself, we've been in constant contact with our financial arm now, our D financial, who is new to us. Can you mute here?
Yeah. Get feedback.
That should be better.
Yeah.
Who, who's new to us, so they have been, started going through everything, working with all of our department heads on capital improvement plans. And we've been talking about that a lot. So they have projected into our budgetary income, a ten percent shortfall in property tax collection. Meaning they just expect ten percent of people won't pay their property tax. That's not unique to us. They are projecting that for all of their clients. They do not believe that it will be that significant, but they're choosing that number to base our twenty-twenty-one budget off of so that it is enough to cover whatever the shortfall is, if there is one. So they don't foresee it being ten percent. They just think that that number's impactful enough that it will be less than that. So they are already working towards that. We've budgeted, they've worked on capital improvement plans five to six years out from now. Um, we talked about the fire truck earlier. That was one of those items in there. So they are aware of that. We continue to work on it. Brenda and I keep in contact, well, Brenda keeps in contact with the courthouse, the auditor and the treasurer to see how we're doing. And we do not predict that big of a shortfall from the property tax type of things, which is our largest funding mechanism through the general account. The items, income tax centric and motor vehicle tax centric, such as gas tax, are ones that will take a larger impact potentially. The state hasn't said that that's the case yet either.
Okay.
It does not negate the point though, Kevin.
I know, but, and then just for my clarification, um, the current website, how much is the annual fee on it?
Around a thousand dollars, I believe. Between five and a thou- five hundred and a thousand.
Every so many years, we're paying a new fee though on that, right? Like it, it's like, is that what the seven thousand is or seventy-two hundred every, is it every three years or something with our current website?
I, I don't. I don't know what the seven thousand is.
I thought there was a, uh, I think every three years or something, there's, or maybe it's every four years, but there's a fee with that. It's somewhere in that nu- neighborhood.
Any other?
Oh, well, I mean, for that money, I expect to see big things and I think it's gonna happen. It's something that we need to happen to promote our city. It's, it's, it's basically what people are gonna look, that's what's gonna pop up when they punch in Greysboro, Indiana. Um, and, um, hopefully with a better website, we can be able to, um, we can, um, recoup that money each year.
Well, and I, I think as well- And, and I think there's an interesting piece, or not an interesting piece of this, but they're also working with tourism. And that was one of their references that we use locally. Philip Diwer has had nothing but good things to say about the company. Um, so they are familiar with our community already through that project. I think, I don't know if Kristen mentioned it, um, the board of works is using riverboat funds for this. And I assume that we can use some of those going forward to help with the yearly cost as well. Um, that would be part of the budgetary process, but some of the kinds that were already appropriated in riverboat.
Um, I can also see this benefiting, um, EDC and, um, and tourism. I mean, maybe taking, I mean, using, using our, putting things on our site instead of having extra money for marketing for them. Is, is, is that something that, does that make, did that make any sense to you?
Yeah, that made a lot of sense. And I agree with that.
I mean, if they was to come and ask us for money for marketing or whatever, for, um, for economic development or tourism, you know, um, for advertisement or this, that and the other, they, they would be able to use this outlet. Okay.
I would agree with that. No?
Everybody's cutting in and, and out on my end, so I'm referring to Kristen's point of view, but I didn't give any of that. Anyway, any other questions or comments on that?
No.
I mean, I totally get Kevin's, uh, concern, uh, th- this is all a timing issue. Uh, and, and Viata's point, I think, is well-taken too. Uh, in, in this, in this, uh, time, we need, uh, a good website. And that's how everyone shops, that's how everyone communicates, that's how everyone gets their information. Uh, but, uh, again, I do see Kevin's, uh, concern. We're going, we're going from just a little bit to a whole lot. Real fast.
We're gonna hope for the best.
I, I think we'll be able to make it work. Um, I think it'll work out. And I, I, I do think it'll pay dividends. Maybe it's, it's one of those items that won't necessarily show a plus cash balance, but I, and it doesn't show the negative cash balance it creates now either.
Kinda, what kinda contract term are you guys going with this, with the, with Simple View?
There's a contract to build it, um, but then I believe it's a year-to-year, um, setup. There is no long-term contract with it. Full transparency, part of their programming is proprietary. So if we decide we don't like them in four or five years, we may have to, we would have to go back and do the build process again. Um, just so everybody's on the same page. We had somebody bid on it that asked us if our budget was north of eighty thousand dollars and we told them no. So they came in at fifty thousand dollars. Um, we've had some examples that we've used that have went beyond that even. So it is a lot of money. It is more than we have spent historically. I think that the product will show, show it. I'm confident what they can do. And I think the local endorsements they've received are, are reassuring.
Very good.
Okay. Um, up next, we have Brian Robbins, he's on here. We were gonna have a discussion about, uh, GCOM's abatement that is sort of screwed up. But they haven't gotten all the paperwork in yet, so he's going to lightly cover it. It's a four-year information only, so that if you have questions about it over the next month, we can get those addressed. And hopefully GCOM will have us the paperwork come June's meeting. Brian?
Yeah, thanks. Uh, I'm just here in front of my fire pit, uh, burning some tires. We, uh, actually, Josh, I did end up getting the SB one form. Uh, so I do have the materials, but I understand we can't deal with it today. But for everybody's information, back in two thousand seventeen, in April, um, the city was approached by GCOM uh, for a three-phase project, a, a three-phase abatement. It was, it was granted at that time with the understanding that, uh, for each phase of the abatement, um, the GCOM would, would come back in for a separate SB one and that being an application for an abatement. Uh, in two thousand seventeen, uh, it was two thousand seventeen dash four, they came in and it was granted. And they came back in two thousand eighteen, it was two thousand eighteen dash four, and it was granted. And, uh, but last year, they failed to come in with two thousand nineteen's, um, that last, that third phase. So they're approaching, um, the tax committee, uh, view, view, uh, the abatement review committee, uh, asking if they might be able to, um, file that, uh, two thousand nineteen SB one, uh, with a waiver of non-compliance since it is connected to the back of the two thousand seventeen, uh, agreement. Um, actually, Josh, I talked to the accountant, accountant as, as well, and this is actually the only hiccup we have. The other ones would have been, uh, haven't been taken care of. Uh, I did speak to the, the, uh, tax abatement committee on this. Uh, we met, uh, last Friday and they believe, um, because of situations like this, and you guys all know this is not the first time for a company to come in and ask for a retro, uh, tax abatement, uh, be it a, an application or a CF one. We feel it's fair to both the taxpayers, but also the company to, um, uh, to grant them a four-year abate, abatement instead of a five-year, essentially taking one, one year away. Uh, but not, uh, essentially, uh, penalizing them too much. Uh, so when we come back, we'll be asking for a four-year abatement for GCOM. Uh, and I should have this SB one out to you guys, uh, probably this evening, right after this. But it will need a waiver of non-compliance, which will be expertly drafted by one Chris Stephen. Um, and, uh, there you go. And, uh-